Shramsky. Taylor Mertz. Wardman. Williams.
Present.
Present on the microphone.
Okay, I need a motion to excuse Councilwoman Shramsky and Councilwoman Ward.
Tom Hough.
As the motion is supported, any discussion? Sign in now, Ropel.
Miller.
Yes.
Edela.
Yeah.
Taylor Martin. Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Okay, um, which brings us to approval on the amendments to the agenda. I do have a couple that I would ask for. Uh, one would be to move a special presentation, um, from the Sheriff's Department, uh, up to, um, right after approval of the amendments. Okay, um, Ropel on that.
Edela. Taylor Mertz. Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Okay, and then the second thing, um, I would like to add to the, well, move up on the agenda, would be items number twelve and thirteen. We have the developer here, um, who does have to be, so, um, wanted to give him the opportunity to turn it to move it, uh, right after the, uh, the six, right, live presentation.
Tom Hough.
As the motion is supported, any discussion? Sign in now, Ropel.
Taylor Mertz.
Yeah.
Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Edela.
Yes.
Shramsky.
Um, now I need a motion to approve the agenda as a new.
Tom Hough. For.
Any discussion? Sign in now, Ropel.
Taylor Mertz.
Yeah.
Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Edela.
Yes.
Shramsky.
Yes.
Six J's.
Okay, and we're just approved, uh, which brings us to approval of amendments from September twenty eighth, twenty twenty one.
Move. Hart.
Hart is been moved and supported, any discussion? Sign in now, Ropel.
Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Edela.
Yes.
Shramsky.
Yes.
Taylor Mertz. Six J's.
Which brings us to item number two, which is a sheriff initiative, uh, to control gun violence incidents, uh, security initiatives. Representatives by Captain Ewing, Mayor Wardman, and Mark Al.
Yes, I would like to bring, uh, Captain.
Put the comments up, sir. You two like to put the comments. Go ahead, ma'am.
You ready?
Yep.
All right.
Yes, I have two minutes to talk.
This is a special, uh, presentation for a very important issue. Uh, one of the things that is, uh, important and most important, uh, uh, responsibility of public legal officials is public safety. Uh, and one of the things that has been interesting, uh, sadly, is, uh, gun violence, uh, and violent crime in our community, although all over the country. And so, uh, we feel it is imperative that we act in a way that's responsible to secure a safe community. And I have spoken, as well as that the mayor has worked with Captain Ewing, to see what measures we might take. He's here to talk to you about some of the measures that we want to take to make a safe community. He's here also with Lieutenant Troy. I mean, I can come and talk about, uh, advantages, but there's also been conversations with them. Uh, and one of the things, uh, just able to, uh, share the information from the best of his side. That's part of the program, although we've had an additional recruitment, which was counseled literally, uh, a couple months ago. Uh, we felt that would be important as well, as Captain Ewing is now bringing in traffic. For the concerns about the speeding and recklessness going on, uh, and that's all part of a whole organic, uh, uh, way of solving, uh, public safety. So he's here to talk about that, a very important issue, uh, and we're going to appreciate your attention, uh, as we develop this plan further and coming. Captain Ewing?
I would like to thank Mayor Wardman. Okay.
Push the microphone. Let's agree, uh. There.
Hold on, I think there are one. Fine, so this is Robert Washington. Oh. I'm such a spotty. Well, you know, it's fine. Usually, uh, people think of. Now, I'm looking at the fact that we're going to drop. Frank, what was it? I wanted to do a shot. It took most of you because it's Georgia shooting, but that's why I'm. So why don't you do the. In twenty twenty, we had thirteen homicides. We all personally didn't solve. In two thousand and one, so far, we did, we had seven homicides. And that's the new part of, uh, five, two, three, four. City, the current time, same social, get the numbers that explain, sign off, so we had thirty thousand more than we had twenty-four homicides. Second one had two homicides, that's twenty-one. This is what we are doing back in this one. Our director's calling, he's just calling the high crime area. In the past eighteen months, we have taken pretty significantly on. Section. Our county enforcement team, in the past eighteen months. Excuse, excuse me, Captain Ewing, I'm gonna give you some more time, uh, but we can barely hear you, you're so tall, I'm, I don't, I don't have a problem. Let me just speak loud until the microphone. I'm, I'm.
Look at that.
They're gonna go there.
That's all your reports.
No, this is my reports. I know. I would like to thank Mayor Wardman, the Biden, and City Council, the county. We come into this guy. Over the past twenty-one months, several, one year, nine homicides, served. Crimes such as violence, assault, murder, other crimes. That have been downed in the past two years. The news is calm. It's been plenty of people drive-by shooting, it's like. We are running the track, we are running the track, the number of drive-by shootings. But, but this is only for a shot. It is mostly, where shootings are, or you're like that. In twenty twenty, we had sixty shots.
Carter.
So far this year, we already have fifty of the shot. Twenty twenty, we got thirteen homicides. All thirteen homicides have been solved. In twenty twenty-one, so far, we have seven homicides, sixteen have been solved. Here's the curve. It's second, so that's around twenty-seven. We have about a more resident, have twenty-four homicides. I think about the. Past year, I have two homicides. What would I like to add? Our director told me, he makes a lot of high crimes there. In the past eighteen months, they have taken seventeen homicides. Our county enforcement team, in the past eighteen months, have one hundred and seventy-nine suicides. I have contacted the FBI agent task force to assist these victims by by shooting. And they are now looking active to see the fight. Also, we have a detective assigned to run two hundred and seventeen guns, they don't actually do a physical test. To see if these guns were used in a prior drive-by shooting. By comparing the speed cases collected at each shooting scene. Mayor Wardman and the city council are offering assistance by looking at, finding cameras in areas with a high history of assault crimes, such as the multiple farms, street lane, and curbs. The guardians being the police and sheriff officers, administrators staff, and bear doctors. Have looked at more effective ways to do this, even in your own words. One thought was adding some parts, which we could promote, but unfortunately, it's too late in the season. With the addition of the tracking, we'd be able to address both the truck design complaints within the next few weeks. President Ewing, in the beginning stages of a drone pilot program, that is currently being tested in Miami. This is the first drone program in the state. The drone will have the capability to respond to calls within minutes, such as shooting, dumping, neighborhood trouble, other things. The drone will be able to send live, video, that is responding to the sound, and pictures of subjects and vehicles involved. Also unaware of some complaints around Bola Parks, Brandy, or that area. We are responding two hundred and forty-nine times, two days to Bola Park. A hundred and eighty-six times to Albana Park, and thirty-seven times to Murphy Park, and ninety times to Shreve Park. I grew up in the city, I enjoy Bola Park, and it's not a bad park, and most of you grew up in the cities. I would like to keep Bola Park in the city. Like this function right now, just a few people, that obviously make people proud everywhere. Be frequently controlling the parks, and their position in the South Side, where they'd be able to control the parks in the north. I'm aware of concerns of downtown, the water shortage. We only had sixteen calls through bus stop this year. And third call. We had, we spent two hundred, two thousand, four times calls from downtown. Where the city's, uh, called parking issues, and the other fifty percent were related to special events and half-dollar cars. The city's in good shape, the water shortage is possible, it's certainly effective, and we're solving the problem. The community also had the possibility to get involved, and have a safer. For some reason, the sheriff office, when you pop, it's more, it's just like a child. I would, I would like to thank, it is an opportunity, recognizing Mayor Wardman, who became the first mayor, sort of a second term, and also became the first senior mayor of the year. I would like to acknowledge, I think, board, council board, with the hard work, and special recognition to, uh, special recognition for two councilmen. Some of them are. Um, we, council, or the country's law. And thank all three for being city officials, as support, encouragement, dedication to the, why, the quality of life for the citizens in Miami. We are so fortunate, and we're forever grateful for Mayor Wardman, Eric Yan, and the trees water, and so. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain Ewing. Well, Mr. President, I've been in these complaints, there's no sound or. Sound cast, nor a Facebook.
We're working on. Working on.
I work with him.
Great, Councilwoman.
Good evening, Captain Ewing, I'm putting me at start, I just got one question. The unit that we just, uh, threw in big money, I just wanna hear publicly, my decision with all of them. So they start. That's, that's my one question.
Uh, we're taking the time to let the hiring focus. This group need, we hire definitely, since training, background check, and it takes two or three months of training, we'll feel awesome. We got two traffic meetings starting necessarily. Uh, we see them on the ball, and you know. Uh, four additional, we also, if there's a, it's two or three. Couldn't be sooner, but if before, we need to forward, they need to.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, anybody else have a question for Captain Ewing? All right, thank you, Captain Ewing. We're gonna move on now, uh, remember.
Going to the next special presentation?
Yes, you got this, he has a minute and a half left, so if you want to take that time.
A minute and a half left?
Yes.
Uh, uh, Captain Ewing is a man of action, and he, so, I, I just wanna emphasize some of the things he said, and, uh, uh, I have a wasted building room for those who can't hear, uh, what he said, sorry. I just wanna emphasize that pride and control of pride, uh, pride are important for all communities. Uh, and there is no one silver bullet, as you know, otherwise, that's decided would have solved it way before now. So it is an organic problem, we have to solve it many different ways, depending on the needs of the community. So one of the things he talked about, two of the things I just wanna emphasize, are things that we're bringing to this community. One of the things that they have is some kind of trouble, uh, getting witnesses, uh, in, uh, these targeted areas where we see repeated gun violence. So those surveillance cameras were an idea to give them additional, uh, tools to work with, uh, to apprehend these shootings that have been going on, drive-by shootings. That seem to be some increasing frequency, you can't stand by helplessly and say, oh, well, it keeps happening, and try, and then the next time, still haven't done anything. We're doing something. And I thank Captain Ewing and the department.
That's why we do it, in my opinion. Okay, the last one's gonna throw us, um, a little bit, this one has a different size, so the same technique works, right? So I click, hold, drag it to my first tab, let go, but it's ginormous. Okay, so, this is gonna happen to you, and where sometimes the images can be really big, like it can go two kilometers that way, okay, so. So this is gonna be our kind of next bit of navigation. Now, we're gonna be learning, zooming in and out first, okay, so I, for this to work, I need to zoom out a little bit. So there is, uh, magnifying glass over here, okay, which you can click once to zoom in, and over here, you can click it to minus, and now this thing, when you click once, will zoom out. So you just toggle between these two here, now, uh, you can definitely do it that way, but what you'll find.
Yes, so, so, and two questions up, uh, just prior to the audience, we're gonna do, uh, wanna ask, uh, to suspend the rules, and this is, uh, the Microsoft Office presentation. Um, for the, to hopefully they can advocate what's out.
And what?
We're waiting for every time. Right here, so we're, uh, available for the support of suspended rules. Four. Our motion is supported, all right, um, Ropel, suspend the rules?
Williams.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Edela.
Yes.
Shramsky.
Yes.
Taylor Mertz.
Okay, uh, thank you, go here, Mr. Mark.
Apologize for the, uh, the use of equipment that's a backbone of the broadcast. I appreciate your patience. Uh, thank you, Council.
So, um, Tim Mark, as you know, is the, uh, director of our IT department. One of the things that we're pushing forward in this community, there's a ton of. Um, things that we want to do to elevate our technology, ability, communicate, uh, knowing much of the city hall, but not so much. So we've been introducing, uh, upgrades to that at the time. And, uh, one of the things that, uh, they're bringing to city hall right now is August, uh, three sixty-five. But, by the way, we've been upgrading all the system. They're going to the cloud, uh, and also, we hope that we will also be able to use some of the ARP money, uh, which is on the guideline allowed by that, to introduce other infrastructure, uh, for Spark City developments here in the city's context. So this is just one phase of a multi-step procedure, in which we are now going to the cloud, using more of Spark City, and increasing communication. So Kim Mark is going to tell you about that, uh, and, uh, other things, there's something else I'll be doing too, uh, that, who's the council? Uh, he's also trying to manage to take office like that. Uh, some of the, one, couple of agenda items deal with the new equipment that we need to buy, in order to upgrade our systems for cable and for Facebook. Uh, our systems are twenty years old, uh, everybody is using fiber optic, it's a big connect, and that's why we get this agenda item on the council, we have. That one again, so that people will have this interruption of audio and video quality, our cable performance. And that's because twenty-year-old, or anybody's name, is old, needs to be replaced, and so the council can do that. So I'm gonna introduce now to Kim Mark, uh, she will give you the presentation.
So, um, before Mr. Hart, uh, speaks, we put these presentations on the agenda in order to be citizens' hours, and to be, uh, from an installation, um, for the. We have a dream to hire a director, and to, uh, split about, please don't take time. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mark.
Um, uh, you'll see next to your cables, uh, kind of a renovated PowerPoint presentation, if you're, um, wanna follow along, um, thank the council president for letting me use this, rather than the twelve-page presentation. Part of that, we're currently having, uh, Microsoft Office sixteen, first of all, it's already over six years old, and there have been no updates to it since we got that in twenty sixteen. Current licensing model is outdated, and it's not perfect, and it's a price to price. Installed on desktop, that's it. And the, yes, uh, with the Microsoft Office. Uh, now this change, which is in our, um, server room, in the city hall, uh, it's meant to, uh, keep the server version up, uh, up to date. Um, so if we do upgrade to, like, say, it's Office twenty nineteen, we'd have to update the server, and, uh, so there's the cost of that, and the capital investment. So we go to the next page, we talk about Office, we go with Office three sixty-five, and obviously, what sixty-five is, what's caused is sub-subscription to this model. Um, we pay for it every month for each user, so if somebody goes, that license, we don't have to pay for it, um, we remove that license as we add new people, we add licenses to it. Um, 'cause currently, what we have to do, if you hire somebody, you have to go out and, uh, Office twenty sixteen license install it, this makes that streamlined. Um, this gets built monthly, um, with the current model, we pay for it one time, but that's it, whatever version you have, don't get any updates on it. One of the big advantages is the Office three sixty-five cloud-based email services. And what that gives you, you have to get your email, uh, anywhere, um, you have that here, but, um, this has the email server based on servers that I- Microsoft has. Um, so that if, uh, something happens, smart, city hall, uh, we have a power outage, whatever. Curst, currently, you don't have the email, but this, you always have the email. Oh, another nice thing is that if one thing happens to a Microsoft server, and it goes down, there's a backup server that'll come up and take care of our. Right now, it's, uh, COVID, it's, it's a problem, that if somebody works from home, we have to install, um, Office twenty sixteen on the laptop, or the. First the desktop, and then back, we have to switch back, just so that we're, um, in compliance with our licenses. Office three sixty-five, we have it on five different devices, we have it on your desktop, we have it on your phone, tablet, any device that you log into Microsoft account, you will have Office three sixty-five and your emails. Uh, Office, uh, Microsoft has additional, uh, security on their servers, uh, we have quite a bit of security on our servers, but I- Microsoft, uh, has security costs, uh, encryption, uh, protection that keeps our data, uh, secure, private. Many other organizations already migrated to Office three sixty-five, known as Open Calm, it's already used Microsoft three sixty-five. Company that I work for, um, use Office three sixty-five, I know, uh, Patreon, uses three sixty-five. Very convenient, one-stop, um, location to get all your applications. On the next page, we have estimated costs. Now, this is where we go from, uh, what is it gonna cost to migrate to Office three sixty-five? Well, there will be a continuous cut monthly charge that we have with Microsoft for licensing. This is based on a hundred and forty licenses. That'll be two thousand four hundred fifty-four dollars a month, with the subscription, correct, cost of being twenty-nine thousand four fifty-three. Now, part of the cost of migrating from our current system into Office three sixty-five means we have to move, uh, all of our emails, have to move our environment over to the Microsoft servers. And, uh, there's a professional cost involved in that, once we, that's been doing this, uh, done fifteen, twenty times already, you know, all the things that are, um, pitfalls are gonna come up, and the professional services cost is, uh, thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Um, most of this, I think, was presented at the budget hearing back, uh, May, but this is just kind of a reiteration of what we talked about back then. Um, so when we talk about timeline, uh, the first thing we need to do is, of course, get, uh, council approval. And once that's approved, then we go through the procurement process, and then once we go through the procurement process, we start the implementation phase. The first part of the implementation would be moving the stuff of our environments and on our servers into, um, the Microsoft servers. Remember, this is just the, uh, the Office and the email portion of our, was on our servers. Um, the mail is the largest part, talking about six terabytes of, of emails that we have to perform, uh, everybody that has email accounts on our, um, Outlook server, but I think it's on three sixty-five. And so that's a part of the timeline, uh, also, this, uh, training, uh, any users on how to use Office three sixty-five. Testing, uh, making sure everything works correctly, and then full implementation in the following. And that's the, uh, our plan for moving from Office twenty sixteen to the Office three sixty-five, so, uh, open to any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mark, anybody have a question?
I'm, 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 I'm familiar with the system, and I don't mind, I don't mind using it, uh, it doesn't matter for me whether we use Microsoft two ten, it was reliable. The problem is, I'm, we're utilizing the system, but I'm looking at my emails, even now, I cannot recall anything. I don't have that, Dale Pulling, Jack Hayley, Mike Wilson, I'm going back to Office, the system worked fine, I sent emails out, but they don't respond. So at the moment, it doesn't matter to me, which, when you got a set of smoke, if somebody in, in one of the departments refuses to answer my emails, then I have a dilemma. But for you saying, I'm, I'm okay with any, any format of use. Thank you.
Sing that.
I, I have no something else, I, 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 I do want to bring again, by the way, Kim, you work together with my, you're a very good employee, you love your job, very. So I just want to comment on the email, I do have a problem with my email, but I'll contact you tomorrow, I'll take one.
All right, anybody else have a question for Mr. Mark? Very good, thank you.
Ken, we have a tap, and you're gonna need our cap, we're coming back to the office, so you can.
Uh, yes, I mean, it'd be much easier than when we start. One thing I do wanna make clear, some people won't, uh, have a fair idea of what the problem is, um, if you think of our current system, there is a server that's in city hall that has all of our emails. It's still gonna be on a server, but instead of the server being in the city hall, it'll be on. It's still going to be on a server, but instead of the server being in the City Hall, we'll be on a server that's in a Microsoft secured, uh, location. We still have to maintain it, we still have to manage it, so that, um, we won't manage for a text or, uh, complex dangers. So the physical location of the data won't be in City Hall, but all the management will, um, interfere.
Anybody else have a question?
Uh, my question, I guess, is for, uh, Mr. Kent and, uh, Mr. Martin. Uh, because during the presentation, uh, this was said to be paid for out of, uh, art funds or billion dollars or whatever you're calling them today. And so my concern, especially since they were going to present time, both probes, uh, this year's portion of the art funds. Um, mainly so, uh, whoever comes in with the new administration will have ability in order to do a million dollars and move to City Hall. So I don't understand why it's seventy thousand dollars to come out and get home with dollars and get our, uh, funds. So we just speak to that as we go.
I hope you can do that.
I can speak to that. It is, it is coming out of, uh, the budget for IT, which is from the general, uh, which is from the fund used for IT provider. Uh, what you heard me say was I had expanded and talked about other smart projects. This is one of them, but this is already covered in the budget for twenty one, twenty two years, if I'm correct.
Correct.
Oh, don't stop, there, there are too much.
Yeah, that, um, uh, the reference earlier, uh, council president established for, um, the, 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 uh, city wifi that, um, the reference earlier. That is the, um, connection to the ARP. So for the Microsoft three sixty five, that's not involved in ARP.
Okay, thank you for that clarity. I guess with the city web wifi, uh, that's coming out of ARP funds, where's that presentation? You know, is that going to come, uh, to the councils? Is that something that you guys are planning on implementing, uh, just on your own, what, what happened?
No, I mean, we, we understand, uh, the, uh, budget process, we understand that, uh, city's charter, uh, so, you know, I, I certainly understand that I can't unilaterally access, uh, dollars that have not been appropriated by council. So that's not, um, anything that's been contemplated.
Mr. Chair, if you want to know one of that presentation going to come to council? Presentations are, as, uh, we have said, that we're going to conduct ARP town halls in which we have citizen engagement input. And that's one of the, uh, uh, guidelines that, that they have given for ARP money. Is that in the use for smart city initiatives. So we have the first of those ARP town halls on the October eighteenth. Uh, people are invited to come, uh, we're going to have a special one just for smart cities. And after we get that input from the community, we're going to bring it back to you, to council people, hopefully have retrieved. You're also invited, every city company is becoming a town hall. And I, I'll count that as citizen engagement, and hope you will have an interest in developing these product ideas. A lot of communities have already got a plan on how to send their money. We don't, we need one. Uh, and a lot of people need the money right now for projects we can utilize. Don't wait, council, please, until, this is still your term. Uh, people need money now, don't wish until in January, it's another chance to get a job down the road. So anyway, we're going to start those ARP town halls and we bring those presentations for the thoughts of that to council. Hopefully we can have a retreat council on March, and then we can do that.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. And the reason I ask, and I, and I, let's not, uh, right after the question. The reason I ask is we've had significant staff changes recently, uh, that saw a PSA instead of being brought to the council. And so the spending in the city, uh, especially with significant budget numbers that are over, uh, a lot of the month for council. One is seventy five thousand dollars plus last year for city returns. Come out of the council file that hasn't spoken to or accounted for, and, like I said, on, uh, finance subsidy that hasn't been brought out. It's very problematic. So when you say, don't wait, I think that talking about what we want to do with money is one thing. Actually spending the money is something else, and I think haste makes waste. And so for the first time, because when I started twelve years ago, the city was in financial ruins. Uh, for the first time, we can actually see the light. And so putting good checks and balances and processes in place, uh, just like the fund balance would be, uh, very helpful. Just because you have money, uh, doesn't mean you need to spend money. So I would just, uh, encourage the administration to work on these town hall meetings and plan it out without, uh, uh, itchiness to spend the money just because it's a project. Yes, uh, person Carter, and then, uh, turn to the right.
All right, and thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I've been against this, uh, this button, this broadband for the city. Majority of people pay, pay to Comcast. Therefore, I have a map inside of Comcast. And Comcast doesn't have wifi every block. I had to bring it up to the school just, just, just two months ago. There are, there are several blocks in my area that, that Comcast does not reach. But everyone that happens to have, uh, might, might be of low income or have a bridge card. Everyone who's individuals should know by the sound of my voice that right now they can go to Boost Motors. They get exactly thirty five gig unlimited every month, as long as they have a bridge card. Now, I don't see as a, a, a unnecessary responsibility that the city should take on to make sure that everyone can have internet. When internet is provided to both people at a reasonable rate. And those who choose not to use Boost, you know, it's roughly nine ninety five per month to pay Comcast. And you will have your internet. So I don't know, I haven't seen the number for the people that do not have access to internet, who cannot fill out job applications. Until a steady come, I cannot see the city throwing money out the window to put a broadband somewhere in the city and try to reach every aspect of, of the city pipeline. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Attorney General.
Um, let me address, actually, uh, what the pro temp just stated. I do believe that if I'm correct, that, uh, those are funds, the federal government, that's one of their primary focuses, uh, pro temp. It's really to provide the, um, that to most citizens. So that's why those funds are actually going to be paid for. Um, secondly, just to piggyback off of what, uh, the council president indicated, so I, I guess my question would be to Mr. Martin. Um, considering that you said that there has to be a lot of coordinating with this Microsoft, with the employees, considering that we're going to have probably different staff members in a couple of months. Um, there's going to be a lot of changes there, whether you make expense to hold off on this, um, until that time. I know that the money is budgeted for the fiscal year, so just waiting a couple of months, projects need to make more, um, you know, fiscal.
At the last page of the presentation, um, of course, we, um, if the council approves the, uh, proposal, uh, let's say it next week or, let's say, and that'll put us through October, it'll take a month. After that, it goes to the computer process in November, and then by the time of the, uh, it'll take at least a month to get the migrate.
I, I saw the schedule, I guess what I'm saying with that, it would be. With the new council meeting.
Okay, anybody else have a question for Mr. Martin?
Yes, Mr. President, I have my hand up for this, thank you. Madam Mayor, you're suggesting that there's town halls on October eighteenth and you want to fall to attend. It would be nice to know just where we're going to attend them.
We will get those, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going to talk about people that close to Congress today.
What are our closing comments?
Uh, we have, I'm not going to close your comments, but.
Uh, so the thing is, is what you do often, and I don't think I'm wrong in saying this, you will let us know where the location is today of the location. So can you let us know next, or this, this next week where this location is being stayed though where you could? And we're talking on October eighteenth, thirteen day away. Thank you.
Sure, that's all.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, here, uh, two things about changes and something I would, uh, maybe you want to bring forward, because it feels like you've been hired in this department. I'm here to do part of this. Uh, you want to bring it yourself?
Uh, we do have a, uh, monthly staff report, which is part of our report, uh, agenda today.
It's not.
It's going, I know.
Okay, you just hear him, then you got a new, you, 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 you're getting hired.
That's what the market report is.
I just, I asked because they said, I just want to know what they said. They said, I'm just wondering what I see.
So, um, just to clarify to say, uh, item number fourteen is the personnel monthly staff reports. And it should have been, uh, not only staff, but, uh, any changes to staff in the city. The reason that we put this item on the agenda, because we have had, uh, so many different changes in City Hall, um, over the last, uh, year or so, especially, uh, that council needed to be, uh, made surprise of who was coming into the city and who, uh, was moving positions, so we would know who to address thanks to. And so, um, just to put that out for clarity, so the reports really need to be complete, um, to the city council.
We get to the item fourteen, we get that.
Thank you. Uh, all right, is the cable back working?
Yes.
Is Facebook back working?
Yes.
Okay, now I will turn it over to further comments if you can, thank you, Mr. Martin.
No, uh, Council President, I think you may have changed, did you move well, Facebook thirteen up?
No, I moved it up after further comments.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. President, um, Ms. Karen Jordison, and then Quincy Stewart on deck.
Uh, good evening, uh, Madam Mayor and City Council and all of the new audience. Uh, my name is Karen Jordison. I am a co-owner of Pinesilar Theater and the Green Room Cafe. Um, I first of all wanted to, uh, thank the Harris Department. Um, as a resident of downtown Pines, we've passed ten years, uh, they've been nothing but amazing. Um, so I thank them for always being there whenever I have needed them. Um, I don't know if any of you noticed, but there is a flag flying on top of Twenty Eighth North Stagnum Street. Then there's our Beacon City, our Beacon Building downtown. And, um, it just warmed my heart to see that, uh, there is a lot of new movement going on downtown. Um, I also want to thank the Department of Public Health for the repairs of the sidewalks. Those are coming along and magnificent. Um, we had at, um, Pinesilar Theater, some great entertainment during motorbella. We had Pines' own Tony Juckerson and, um, Ellie James Boncheck was there. There was a ribbon cutting that occurred this past Sunday, um, at, uh, Studio eleven eleven. And the owner, um, Leo Linford, um, he has amazing studio. And, uh, I suggest that all of you go and see her and see her studio at eighteen North Stag, or eighteen North, uh, here in, sorry. Uh, I am excited to announce that this Friday, that at, uh, seven PM, we'll have Jake Allen returning. He's a finger style guitarist from National New York. And Ellie McManus, who is from Wompil Fills and was recently awarded by, um, awards for, um, a songwriter, singer, so, uh, so we're excited to get her in the house this Friday. Saturday, we are going to have a block party, um, downtown. And it's the October, uh, first block party of Chris Daniel. And there will be music, beer and food, and, um, all of the local crossroads will be partaking in this. So, uh, it'll be from three until, uh, nine PM. So I, um, hope that all of them will be able to attend. Um, I also wanted to let you know that Oakland County will be having a lecture at Pinesilar Theater on October eleventh. That's from eight to nine thirty in the morning. And anyone who, um, is in the restaurant industry, I would highly recommend, um, title this restaurant, check in, where do we go from here? So, um.
Sure, Tom.
My turn.
Mr. Stewart, and then Katie Anderson on deck.
One of the issues, first, is whether economic disenchantment of Pines citizens, especially in South Carolina. As the, as we witness economic upturns in Pines after loan drought that began against us in general waters in the early and mid eighties, right through the nineties, commonly sanitized as did the industrialization. We also see a chain lack of access to capital decent and competitive loans and economic assistance to truly begin black lives and businesses. With few exceptions, we see the same game play over and over again in cities backed by economic advantages from major corporations, emergency management and economic exploitation. Big businesses, they see a vulnerable city like Pines, like ultra seed, dead or dying prey. They move in, get outrageous tax breaks, a fake ones, and utilize loopholes while seemingly hapless, in some cases clueless, or as in the case of the council in Spiedia in Detroit recently, and some of our past council people here, take ride money or vote yes to get favorable businesses. I think that unless black folks, so-called, don't begin to consider self-determination in all its forms, we are doomed to stay in this position forever. Look at Detroit. Fifteen years ago, white suburbanites were wearing t-shirts that denigrated Detroit as a crime-ridden, hip-hop mayor-led city with a bad guy and a dead downtown that they would never come to. Now, just a few short years later, we have white people proclaim America, Detroiters, and wearing t-shirts that say Detroit versus everybody. Go downtown, it's a calving cage of white suburbanites, now urban whites who live and work downtown Detroit and who live very well. Very few black businesses, so-called, who were once were the only businesses almost down there, in and around the area, and now a part of, not a part of, many economic ruin at all. The question begs over and over again, in spite of one red light this president and now vaporized support for Black Lives Matter. Why is the ending to America's long, soliloquial symphony of sympathy for so-called black people always ending in the same separate pages? It's simple. It's ugly to hear, America's foundation is institutionalized white supplants. Not the virulent hate-filled speech of plansmen skinhead from the Proud Boys. No, they're just bamboo, bamboo who mostly uneducated, disenfranchised people who lack access to what they, 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 no. It's the more insidious mechanism of America's institutions that promotes sustained and enforced inequity in justice and exploitation. It's inherent. It's in America's DNA. And unless and until we as black people face the implacable fact, we will be without power. That implacable fact, we will be without power and at best by charities are taken up free.
Thank you, sir. Katie Anderson? David, David Brendan?
Good evening, the struggle for black women and critical human rights continue. The topic of my address this evening is black women. White women are really not your allies. Let me begin with what I have to say this evening, by state history has clearly shown from past to present that the overall majority of whites don't want true racial equality. Last week, I highlighted that two-thirds of whites don't support Black Lives Matter and police reform, decreasing racism in law enforcement. In two thousand nineteen, Associated Press Public Affairs research showed that only fifteen percent of white Americans were in favor of paying reparations to descendants of enslaved black people. For black women, y'all got to fully accept that white women are not true allies in fighting racial discrimination on the job. In a new study conducted by Leanne, citing that ten percent of black women said they had white colleagues who are strong allies in the workplace. Black women feel their white female coworkers only give lip service to wanting equal progress in the workplace without taking action, advocate. Yes, white women are taking action for their own promotion interests in the workplace. They're advocating for themselves and they are progressing. According to catalyst dot org, white women hold thirty-two point five percent of all management positions, compared to only three point eight percent of black women. Indeed, white women are allies to themselves first for their workplace equality with white men. To white women, black female on the job equality does not have the same priority or meaning as Dr. King stated. There is not even a common language where the term equality is used between Negroes and whites. There is not even a common language where the term equality is used between Negroes and whites. Whites have a fundamental different definition. Negroes have proceeded from the premise that equality means what is said and have taken white Americans at their word when they talk of it as an objective. But most whites in America, including many persons of goodwill, proceed from a premise that equality is a loose expression for improvement. What should be crystal clear is that the majority of white women are no different than white men. They have white-skinned privilege and a sense of entitlement. It's clear that white women want job promotions first, they're able to take, for them to take care of their white families first, pay their bills first, so they can continue to enjoy their financial white privilege. Black women, we as a people cannot rely on white women or men to be our allies in our struggle for racial equality. They are clearly not our allies, say. As the great Stephen Van Toobieckel stated, we are on our own. Struggle continue.
Thank you, sir. David Brendan. Up next will be the next.
Good evening. I'd like to thank you guys for the city council here for bringing yourself. I am on the Pines Skateboard Project, um, and just thank you guys for what we've done in our accomplishments. We have reached, uh, a goal of reaching two hundred and fifty thousand dollars matching grant with the Play Foundation. That means whatever we raise up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in match. Uh, so far, we have raised fourteen thousand dollars of that, uh, through restaurants, skate jams, and just having open website donations. Uh, we have also had a project with Paint Tree Pines, the Jerusalem Lockhorn, and People's Skate Shop to put thirty-five brand new skateboard helmets to Pines residents' children for use at our current skate park, which is a rope tennis court and D I Y things that have been built by the community. Um, currently, what we are requesting is anyone in the community who could help with connections, be it business or personal, uh, it's open donations. If we do not raise at least fifty thousand dollars by November thirtieth, it goes out on the matching grant. And we will take the money we have raised and use it to make the D I Y park a little bit better. Uh, currently in your public, now you have a lot of people who skate there and who are also volunteers with the project. And they were here in support as well. Um, what we really need for the kids of this city is a real park, a real skate park that they can learn. Currently, we do not have that. Um, and I see no reason why we can't attain this goal of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a sustainable concrete park, hopefully at Gallier Lake Park. That's our ultimate goal, and with that, we'll have something that will last for generations. If there is any opportunity, uh, I would love to get you guys our sponsorship package. I can email that out to all of you this week, and if you have any more questions, we'd be delighted. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. I had planned to address something that came up tonight, but, uh, I'm actually in big favor of broadband. I've been using three, three twelve, three six five years since it came on the market. It's faster, it's safer, it's more secure, it is the way to go. Broadband, but we're the only city around here that doesn't have it. Uh, I worked in Oakland Hills, we had it seven, eight years ago. And, um, it really behind the times if we don't get up off the cloud and start using broadband. It really has put the city behind. You may not know it till you use it, but it does. I have some questions. Could I direct post to DeBaron, if he doesn't mind? Um, I sit around a lot and listen to people. I'm a people listener and a people watcher. And here are some of the questions that I've amassed in the last month. How many permits for marijuana have been awarded to our businesses? There's also a question, was there a timeframe in which the original number of permitted licenses were to be issued? If that timeframe is passed, what happens? If there was not a timeframe, do people need to know because they may have forgotten or whatever? Um, where do we go from here? Since we're behind Lake Hurry and we're behind Orchard Lake and we're behind Chico Harbor, and since we voted to do it, why aren't we doing it? And I don't have answers when people ask me those questions. Um, and since there is activity down on, uh, Ludwood, somebody must be agreeing to do something. So what has happened there, the public doesn't know. Um, another issue is the school thing over at Purdue. Why didn't they do due diligence? All those schools are old enough that asbestos should have been an overrated issue. Uh, the ongoing theft of everything that's sellable in every one of those buildings, even to as recently as Whitmer last week. Uh, it, it just doesn't make sense. There's something not cohesive about this deal. Um. I think I've handled all the questions that I had. Oh, no, one more thing. Does the budget for broadband include the person who's going to oversee the running of it?
Your time. Okay, um, Ms. Billy Swain.
Good question.
Mail, could you ask?
Well, I'm Billy Swain. Been a while since I've been here. I was meaning it would be nice to be back at City Hall. I understand that. I watched some of them because the mayor has not agreed to. When the shutdown of, um, events and the, the cleanup council changes, it's too bad. Or maybe in three months when she's gone, y'all can be at City Hall up there on the cat, with the new. Uh, Karen, I'd like to talk to you about, uh, this meeting because I am on the GERS board as well as the city board. And I'm a trustee, and she probably heard the GERS board had some, been wrong to them by. Mayor Walden, he says that the council asked her to bring it. I find that strange because in all my years of working for the city, which is over thirty years, I've never heard the council ask the mayor to bring something to the GERS board. And as a retired, I've been actively attending the GERS board even before I became a trustee. So I'd like to talk to you, uh, since we have a trustee that is a city council person, why wasn't that person used? And if that person wasn't used, why wasn't the city clerk used? Because I thought that there was a mandate that the city council needs to communicate with the GERS board. This person said, Mayor said, she took through the item from the subcommittee and brought it to us. That's certainly inappropriate, inappropriate use of subcommittee. It seems that if you had something in the subcommittee, it would be voted out or it would be communicated to the other to be city clerk or the council person. So I'd just like to talk to you and find out, is this the way the city now runs their business? And so, because there was not an actuary study on this, those people expect four hundred additional hours to continue forever. Uh, there has not been an actuary study done, and it doesn't sound like it, it is going to be, but maybe it will. But, um, I wanted you to know about that. The other, the other thing is, um, the mayor made a proposal for the instead of the three point five termination evaluation, that it'd be four point five if it was approved by the GERS board. So, um, we'll see how that goes. I know I told him that as a city, my fault. Thank you.
Your, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Melanie Rucker. I stay at this. Life is like a box of chocolates. You never know what you're gonna get. For the last two weeks, I've been trying to do a lot of outreach for the youth in Oakland. One week, we gave out seven, all of one network computers as well as seven thousand dollars on Twitter. Last week, we gave out seven thousand dollars for a homecoming makeover for a program called Be You're Beautiful. And it got me thinking, what can I do next? How can I top that? So then I talked to myself, as I always do when I have a great idea. And I said that I want to do a trunk or treat event for the South Side. The event is gonna be at four fifty-six Autumn Street, in, on the south side of Miami, right off of Frank's Road. It's gonna be from five to seven. There will be free food, free hot dog, free candy, and a whole bunch of chocolate and treats for all the students, students from the South Side. You can, anybody can come, but I definitely want to do it over in that area because not everybody in that area has great means of transportation. So that means everybody can go to the other events, and I wanted to be specifically for this influence on those children who like somebody care they met. So again, it's a trunk or treat event at four fifty-six Autumn Street from five to seven P M. And if you have any questions, you can please reach out to me at two four eight three nine zero zero five nine one. Again, my phone number is two four eight three nine zero zero five nine one. I thank you for your time. Have a good one.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Lexa, uh, item number twelve, uh, who is presenting.
I'm going to have, uh, with Mr. Stan, our prime minister, uh, the first item has a personal number, but it may be, uh, don't, uh, that. It's actually going to be eleven twenty-five, what's her?
Uh, yes, uh, good evening, uh, Council President, City Council, Madam Mayor. Uh, we have two items on the agenda. First one, item number twelve is, uh, for the location at eleven twenty-five One Memorial Area. Uh, here, uh, from the applicant provides an exchange of management, is looking to current zoning is C dash one. Uh, they're proposing it to be C dash three, which is Corvair Commercial. The, uh, applicant, if you're familiar with that site, it's an eighteen acre site that is, um, lots of extended, it's the next slider, Ben. It's a little bit of an overview, so, uh, it's a council, it's over there now. Uh, it's not like you'd remember, is it, the eighteen acre site, uh, north side, uh, North Perry, uh, with, uh, North Perry at the bottom of right-hand corner of the graphic, uh, that he had, and also East Madison that's four and five, just to the north of that, same side of the street of North Perry. Little high school, south of it, you got the cemetery and residential area. The, um, site itself is, uh, the future land plan for this, uh, site is a mixed use of, uh, commercial and also industrial type of uses in that area. The zoning app, uh, as indicated on the next graphic, represents, um, the site itself, but it's, it's almost C one. Uh, the applicant, uh, has been changed, uh, through the zoning amendment, amendment to C F three, Corvair Commercial. Uh, the applicant and representative did have the opportunity to, with Councilman, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Dr. Burks and also Sharp, uh, to discuss their, uh, project with them. And from there, uh, we did, uh, get a unanimous approval from the planning commission also. We did have an opportunity to go through the commission and also, uh, with you here tonight in regards to the zoning criteria that, uh, was our findings and what's for this. And we haven't answered any questions that the council may have. Uh, the applicant is here. If you have any specific questions, uh, they are, um, as part of their company is what we call Extinity Freight. Extinity, Extinity, Extinity Freight, excuse me, is a company that, uh, think of it as a fulfillment center for the auto industry. Uh, so they'll be, uh, they work with the big three, they work in plants all over, just in time products and, um, to go for all the various plants and suppliers in and around the state and also in Canada. Uh, they have, uh, provided, uh, some initial lots that will be after following the zoning app amendment. They would have the opportunity to, uh, site plan review. They've done some preliminary inspections and information that would be further advanced by our office in regards to site plan. Like I said, the applicant is here and also is representing.
Yes, it turns sharp.
Uh, just to piggyback off of what Bernd just said, uh, I did in fact meet with the applicant along with, uh, Dr. Taylor. And I think that the council should know that I did ask the question in terms of the, is it in, uh, close proximity of any residential neighborhood, would there be possibly a problem with the noise or, um, with the, uh, transportation going back and forth? That is not an issue. Uh, in addition to the fact, I asked the question, were they seeking any type of, uh, tax incentives? And they're not requesting any type of tax incentives for it. Thank you.
Thank you, your turn, Sharp.
Yeah.
What would you, I would like to hear from the applicant, uh, because I'm the one who, uh, this, uh, this might be, so, what, yeah, we can go find there. Oh, okay. Uh, yeah, so, but if the applicant can take the phone, we'll check, um, so. That was before my time, Dr. Taylor, so I'm gonna check out.
Thank you, Mayor and, uh, members of the council. Paul Reski on behalf of the applicant. So, any questions you have, we'll have to answer.
Yeah, um, I know Councilwoman there, or Taylor Burke, met with you guys, but this is the first, I'm here by, uh, as council. So I just, uh, wanted to, um, give you an opportunity to tell people what you're planning on, actually, I'm here in my spot.
Okay, for the building itself, uh, Pitney Bones was in there, they ran it as, uh, a warehouse type of operation, fulfillment and, uh, mail sorting. They've been now looking down around to listen to another building. So, we're gonna come in there, we're gonna make some improvements to the building, to the site itself. Uh, you know, can we get to it this year? We'll go through the process with work and, uh, most likely in the spring, there's one, some of the construction. But we intend to, you know, it's a large site, the parking area, it's pretty weathered. So we have intentions of stripping that and resurfacing it. One of the things that we need to do is secure the perimeter. I don't know if you have that slide with some of the renderings. So in your pack, you can see some renderings of what we intend to do with the streetscape. Uh, the entrance in the center on Perry. Uh, we're gonna do some nice things with that. It's almost gonna look like you're coming into a nice apartment complex. So it'll be some landscaping, flowers, some wall, a couple of things. This is the need to have a secure site. And I'll let probably the owners talk further about that. But we intend to, to fence the perimeter, add some landscape, make some improvements to the, uh, the parking lot, the side of the building, we're gonna clean it out. And as to the residents in the area, uh, they probably won't be any different than what they've seen for years because the area along Madison is pretty well tree-lined. We'll put some fencing up here too and also add a little more landscaping there. The back of the building, not much gonna be going on there, so. The, the front of it, we'll do some improvements to the side. We're probably gonna add some overhead doors if we need that for access to the building. And just in general. And just in general, spend a bit of money to make it look a lot better. But I'll let Ken and Tony have a little, uh, go, you know, about the business itself, they can give you a moment.
Uh, good evening, everyone, uh, Council Mayor. Uh, so our business is pretty much as Ern is stated, uh, we're pretty much centered for the auto industry, big break. Our top customer group would be, uh, General Motors and Chrysler and Ford. So what we do is warehouse their parts, auto parts, they don't expire as soon as they're any kind of gas, so what, uh, what the big three do is they reject their sales a quarter of that time. Uh, lately, they've been having, uh, issues with storing these parts, they usually leave them on trucking companies' trailers, in order to store them anywhere they can find leasing space. What we do is we need to solidate everything so we can have a one stop shop for their auto parts. Have the, uh, heat bricks, bring the, uh, parts from all throughout the space, also handle it as well. Uh, we are fast at food, which is, uh, CBSA is, since we cross the border, are, uh, pretty much, we have pretty strict privacy fencing, uh, but we're gonna have pretty much surveillance twenty-four seven, cameras throughout the whole site. Uh, this is just to prevent any, anybody, such as putting contraband on a truck or trailer or something, going across the border. Uh, so what we do is we warehouse the parts for anywhere for three months to a year, depending on what it is. And then once the automakers call us, order suppliers, they need those parts, we send smaller, sprinter vans, kind of like the Amazon ones. And we deliver it directly to that, to that manufacturer, to, uh, assemble the parts, so. So, um, my name is Kenneth Salad, I'm the C E O of the company. Uh, we do intend to invest quite a bit of money into the facility, which we have to, as I mentioned, for your purposes. Uh, as well as, uh, potentially just for the warehouse space, which is which is about a hundred and twenty thousand square feet of space, we do need that, and we like to consolidate everything into one. Instead of getting scattered throughout Warren, currently, we have some stuff out in Detroit. And we feel safer when we have one area that's larger than our company. We've been in business for about eight years, and, uh, we've hired over eighty-five people, probably goes around through those eight years, eighty million dollars in gross revenue. Uh, we do pay taxes, and we're compliant in every aspect of that. Uh, this is my partner, he's the C E O, and, uh, like this.
Uh, I just wanna say that we're really excited to, uh, join the city in this opportunity that you have it. And, uh, we're looking at really, uh, expanding our business in the city and, uh, providing some additional jobs. Uh, and just really growing in the city. So, this, uh, location is ideal for us, uh, we've been looking for a long time, and I think this is a great fit for us.
Thank you, anybody have a question? Hi, okay, Councilwoman, I'm a PD with the council.
How were your hours of operation before the delivery trucks? Because you are near a property community, and on Madison, you do have residential housing. The record behind you is our firefighter station.
Right, I understand what you mean. Uh, since our, our routes are scheduled, dedicated, contract, our contracts range anywhere from a quarter to a year. Everything is strictly scheduled, so our hours of operations are anywhere from eight A M. to nine P M. They're actively focused.
Eight to nine P M.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, unfortunately, you guys put up against my mission, that's my resident, that was one of my concerns, so she asked, uh, first of all, I gotta two or three, this is the first I've heard of this trip. Uh, giving so many questions, um. I'm in eighty-four, you said it, I think it was eighty-five, eighty-five.
Right.
Hours of operations, eighty. Reason I ask you these questions, that I have animals on across the street from me, and they bring their big trucks with them, they see, and that's one of my concerns, uh, when the trucks be going naked, they're tearing up my neighborhood streets.
No, 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 not at all, we're, we're strictly gonna be, uh, going towards a highway, close highway, which is one point two miles from the facility itself. So, we'll be delivering, we're not delivering any to residential areas, we'll be just strictly negro, and then the highway.
Oh, okay, my second question is traffic, as you well know, I don't know if you guys have seen, is that, that section has been turned to the bike lane. That's one lane going, and with a bike lane, that has been an issue and a problem here. Even though the administration wouldn't get to it, maybe another administration change, coming back on, on the, uh, bike lane. Because that is too much traffic going out here. With you guys adding that, uh, business, that's gonna put more pressure on Perry Street. It's not in there, in and of, that, that one lane. Uh, the traffic, check it out between two and five in the evening, it's nonstop, it's bomb, uh, the bomb. That may be a problem with, that's well, on, on here, sure. Because of that one lane, that bike lane.
Yeah, that would be soft, what we're, what we're, our trucks are gonna be coming, coming, we're gonna be, we're not gonna, gonna be going over here, soft, soft.
Well, I'm just saying, get out of there, period, from the park, yeah, I know that area really well. Actually, to keep it up there, I, I, I wanted to get you to clean it up, but it, it is a obstacle. Uh, and another problem, see, I'm, I'm knowing all the stuff, really with Amazon, so, we're gonna have a problem with them as well. I've come into the neighborhood, the dust, and the dust, particles and stuff. So what you guys think, when you put up a privacy fence, burn, or, you know, so, when they fix in, and working, that is such an obstacle. You got one on Featherstone, as you say, with grandfather, the environment, so I can't do nothing with that one. The one that went into the, the cross case, they, to be, and they just work, and they just taking on a little time, and the dust going all up the yard. People got angry on this, on Featherstone Street, it's been a nightmare.
Uh, well, with, with the, uh, the, the lead from, uh, Council President, you know, to, uh, pitch through the, uh, temporary construction fencing ordinance, uh, that would be required uh, around, particularly around the quarter states, around the building. So we're gonna concentrate that work and effort, uh, when the, some of the outside will build the facade, but also on the inside to accommodate the business use. And to be clear, that the, uh, so they have truck and trailer traffic coming in, dropping off the parts, but then as they mentioned, they're using sprint vans to, uh, distribute that product out, you know, um, and will be using strictly just on Perry. Uh, not Arlene, and not Madison whatsoever.
I agree, what Amazon said, maybe you want to, you guys know. But, uh, that is just something that, if you're just concerned, when we, we said the company here, so, of that one lane, that is gonna be a problem, you guys. So, if you're gonna see the trucks, like, maybe get out of it, and such and such, they, traffic is bagged up from all the way down, uh, along the water, it'll be down to, you know, downtown the bike lane. It is, it's, uh, it is a issue, I know, I live there, but.
I understand that still, we know, but, uh, comment on the truck traffic, the, the big trucks themselves will be running. You're talking like ten to twelve a day? Well, ten to twelve a day on the big trucks. With the little sprinter vans, maybe a little more, but we have no need to go into the residential areas, you know. When I spent some time with Councilwoman Burks, uh, we talked about that, because I know that's a concern for her and her district. Is keeping that traffic out of downtown. We're gonna avoid downtown, go to northern route. And, you know, we have access to the freeway, one thing. With that industry, you know, distance isn't a big thing.
One last question, and I'm done. Uh, you guys can plan on employing any, consider finding residence?
We look to probably add right away up to twenty-five to thirty people, and we will look into the city, we intend to hire residents. So these would be warehousing jobs, uh, good paying jobs that can support a family.
Uh, thank you guys, uh, so much, thank you all for considering Panday. I guess my question for Burn is just the secret, we're just voting on, uh, changing the zoning today, correct?
Uh, correct.
And what they didn't mention, uh, in the plan, was what would the commercial building be, they're planning to change the seat. Sorry, I didn't just vote, so, question, kind of, first, strip mall, was it, was it?
No, uh, it is not, uh, in that, uh, C three quarter commercial district allows for light warehousing, mag, light warehousing to be located in C three. That is the reason why we're looking to change that zoning from C one, which is intended to have more smaller business services type of spaces to locate there. And it does, and also, if you look, if you look at zoning ordinance, it's quite a bit of C three in that area, so we're really not is creating an isolated zone or incompatibility with those zoning districts.
Okay, and my last question, um, the senior, we suggested zoning, and then they would come back later to the council with the actual site plan, or how is that what was just said?
Site plan, uh, typically would go through to the, uh, the
Right, and then once they're approved, then, you know, get to rock.
Then they would, you know, they're, uh, building permits, so.
I think, does anybody have a question? Uh, yes, I'm not there.
I'd just like to add one quick thing, uh, really mentioned, but this is a totally, uh, and it can, completely get it not asked for any waivers or any, uh, vacancies, so, let's always just know. Uh, they're coming in as a company, just bringing it, not a development, uh, certainly in a marketplace, and they'll normalize it, uh, for auto parts, as well as bringing drops. So I just wanted to add that note, uh, to the, to the council member's note.
Yeah, thank you, the term's short. Uh, so, uh, thank you guys so much, everyone, go on to item number thirteen.
Number thirteen is also along that, and this is related to the property at seven sixty-one West Huron, along the quarter
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor, um, here we have, in, maybe, seven sixty-one West Huron, how do we know this one? It has former bank building, um, just the rest of the, uh, both offices. And, uh, their current zoning on that piece of property is the front half of that site, six acres in total. The front half of it, uh, fronting on, uh, West Huron is zone C one, local business. The back portion of the site, uh, where's the large parking lot, um, is zone P one, the parking lot. Or they are requesting to zone to C dash three, uh, quarter or commercial. Uh, currently, right now, in the, as it brings to our master plan and our future land use plan, this area and the site, it's labeled with what we call a neighborhood commercial. And what that means is it's intended to be commercial or mixed use, uh, particularly vertical, which kind of runs a well with five story existing building that's there, and they're proposing, uh, detail on the versatile office, office spaces and office users, uh, on the remaining public doors. Uh, and really, and what, what's intended to, because of its prime location along West Huron, it does give them the ability, because of that locale, to foster some further types of product and services to the area, the city itself, and also to the neighborhood. And that's what, as, as it relates to that future land use, uh, I did mention in regards to the aspect of it, in regards to the zoning, which kind of the zone data is proposing. And also, I think it's important to note that, uh, in our findings, let me just explain the process that we've gone through with some of their bits, uh, learning, uh, not just on their part, but also on our part. But what we've done is that, uh, we did come before the planning commission, uh, in regards to looking at a special exemption permit, special land use for, to locate, uh, maybe warehousing on the parking lot area of the South Capital Site. And also, they came with a site plan. Now they, uh, what we decided to do is halt that until we get through the zoning with the council. I did get through the planning commission, uh, unanimously in regards to the zoning of the site, which I mentioned. Uh, in November here, with the gap in front of our, uh, planning commission, for a special exemption permit, or what they call a special land use, and also site plan review and approval. They're had, they've been working with, uh, their architect and engineering, uh, also working with, uh, the fire department. Uh, and also talking, um, in regards to listening to the concerns of the neighborhood, the neighbors and residents that were, that did come out to our first meeting, planning. Uh, Councilwoman Sharamski was there, knows all this project very well, um, and ensures you can keep your constituents updated as we evolve. So I just wanna give you a background as well, with finding, but. When we take a look at a site like this, uh, we look at it in regards to, doesn't meet the objectives of our master plan, and it does. And we look at this former bank building, um, it was, it's been developed for years ago, so geological and environmental features are, are totally, um, no going with the concrete on the site. Uh, we also take a, a look at regards to, taking very close look in regards to redevelopment of a mixed use building and office, uh, taking a look at regards to parking, looking at regards to access, uh, looking at compatibility areas, and other smaller functions type of, which is, uh, on this Huron. And I think it's important to note that we have, um, within our division of planning, we take a very strong look, al- along with, uh, the rest of our administration, really take hard look in regards to that West Huron Court, or to really look at an overlay or a court or improvement area, strategic plan, really foster the redevelopment of that or redevelopment and development of that area, not just along the frontage, but also a setback from the roadway, really to preserve and protect residential areas, foster enough, uh, economic development in regards to taking those existing businesses and turning them into something more viable uh, along every quarter or end of the year. Uh, the applicants are here, uh, if you have any, so, any questions?
Okay, I would like to, uh, applicants, how about, then, Councilwoman here? Uh, this is my phone, I just, I just, yeah, go ahead, a lot of this is coming up.
Okay, um, he's been in for the planning commission three times, and myself, no, number of residents have been there all three times. Uh, he had a meeting with, um, at the Bay property with some residents, they've been very, very, oh, amiable, excuse me, um, to the suggestions by the residents and the changes that they wanted. Um, their revised plan is, is actually on my Facebook page, District Two, Councilwoman, I can translate, if anybody wants to see it. Um, so I, I and the residents had no objection to them changing to C three. Um, and anything they wanted to do, other than what's allowed in C three, we'll have their special exemption, but and that's where the new storage comes up, and so far, and most of my residents don't have a problem. It's just details with the site plan, you know, which trees are gonna stay, where exactly is the fence gonna be, these kinds of things. And so far, they've been very cooperative, and now we'll leave the rest of there.
Well, everybody, their name is Russ, parts of a pound. City now, about ten years, uh, of our, city. Well, mainly, with, uh, some of this building here, we see a lot, a lot of opportunities, don't try to eat, they don't, uh, but it isn't a key when all that extra money, they, they, sort of, they're waiting in the back, it's like a no visible from, uh, here on, strictly, uh, private storage.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Okay, go ahead, Councilwoman.
So, you're talking about the storage units in the back of the property, that they will be physical, then see, so we can have fencing around them that will cover it? Are they not?
There's a, there's a fence there, it's, uh, but, yeah.
Heard, like, the highway, see, that's that building, it's, uh, storage units, like, that.
I'm looking from Gen C.
Right, right.
So it's a side street.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I'm sorry, no, I thought you meant, no, there's gonna be a big, uh, long, sorry, well. Residential stuff.
Oh, yeah, we, we just require it as part of, uh, the, of self-storage, we need to do our own set of things. The privacy. I just wanted to hear from that, I stand on the financial mission requirement, thank you.
Okay, does anybody have a question?
Mr. President, um, they, the citizens will have an opportunity if they come to the planning commission, and I know a lot of them, they're one around the agenda. So they can hear this and see their plans, because as I said, they do get special exemption permit for this, but so far, they've been very cooperative to any suggestions that the residents had, like, lowering the lights from twelve feet to ten feet, those types of things, which trees they were going to keep. And so it's an ongoing process, so anybody who's still concerned, please come to the planning.
Yeah. Uh, good, um, Madam Mayor?
Yes, I would also like to make the comment, I made my microphone was wrong, previous, uh, applicant. And that is to say that this, uh, applicant has asked nobody or thieves, no abatements from the city, they want to be taxed. They want to be taxed as a monthly from the city.
Uh, thank you, um, for those of you who don't know, uh, Russ also owns, uh, seven more second on the down side. So if you can't get it, hopefully they can affect that thing to the quality of work, I don't know, but the bank needs to be. Where's Carl?
Oh, no, I'm just, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm just glad that it's happening to, to show us the, uh, corner Gen C and you're on. And I think the, uh, the many storages is a perfect, uh, item that they have within the city, right here. People moving in and out, and they need somewhere to store their items. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna move on back, uh, to item number four, five, six, seven, uh, eight and nine, uh, which is, uh, on to, uh, Madam.
Yes, we have, uh, several, uh, staff to be, uh, mostly Phil Brown, who was the back, who, uh, who, uh, but, uh, I would like to add one point of clarity here, uh, all, uh, mine, all the items from four to nine, we deal with, uh, the council's request for things that wanted to move back to council chambers, everybody with that. So, uh, we, uh, but the, uh, under item six and nine, there are some comments. And also item seven, seven, eight and nine, I'm sorry, there are comments in, uh, both ways, those are not administration comments, those are something to be turned out on, uh, and it's not really as we put it here. Those items are free-standing items, they can go with any one of these, and what they are, are the equipment, repairs and replacements that, uh, Phil Brown has been bidding for for about two years. So many, that's one of the reasons he had run back and forth today because Facebook wasn't on. Every other month, you know, having to sign, buy some more equipment, it's something breaking down. Twenty-year-old IT, uh, cable equipment is twelve. And so people likely consider those items, people have been begging to approve the audio and video qualities of our cable system, and fiber optic needs to be installed, versus people have difficulty. So I want Phil to talk about those as separate items, uh, but there are three options here for the council to consider. Uh, they'll, they'll choose one of those, people want to get back to council chambers, senior citizens want to get out of the, the senior citizens, uh, so they can have this senior citizens. Uh, Phil Brown will present, I don't know how you want to go on that.
Okay, thank, thank you, Madam Mayor, I'll say it from here. So we had, uh, cable subcommittee, and I asked, along with my colleagues, for three subevents, what will be the very basic in order to get us back into City Hall? I said, give us the bottom of the barrel, just the basics, the bare minimum, then give us the Cadillac plan, and then give us the bench plan. From that subcommittee, um, which Mr. Gustafson attended, I was actually in Mr. Brown's office that day, because I didn't know if I was doing a lot of this in person. We had, uh, nobody, uh, we didn't have the interim deputy mayor, we didn't have the mayor there. And between what we talked about in our subcommittee and what is presented here, it's not even in the same league. I don't even know where to dissect what you guys have presented to us in a palpable manner. What, what I, what I asked Mr. Brown for, just for a few moments, and I don't want to go like this, I think this is something that needs to happen. I said, how can we get some chairs? How can we be socially distanced as a city council? Mr. Brown also noted that no matter what we do, we need to get the fiber lines in, and so the audio system will be quality in City Hall. I said, include that, because he said it was twenty thousand, and then we had a small debate about, uh, leasing the mics first is, uh, actually purchasing them, because he was saying it was almost three thousand dollars a month to purchase a twenty-five hundred to lease it. Um, and so it made sense for the next four months or whatever to just buy the equipment, and that was one of the discussion for the general council, because of subcommittee, cannot make any decisions. And so, uh, what we have before us today on these items, what I would really like to do is hear from Mr. Brown on what he needs to move us back to City Hall, and then, uh, work, uh, with the administration for next week to have something that is palpable to, without all these extra bells and whistles, to really get us back there, because we just need new chairs. The council needs to be safe, this place class is not quality. We know that we have to remove that current diocese that's there, because ten people cannot sit in that small space as it is currently constructed. And we also mentioned desks, the report that I had in front of me had desks that were, uh, looked at from Walmart and other places. What my direction, um, and question for Mr. Brown was, the county does this all the time. And I said, find out what the county is using, so we can have something that is comparable to what they've done, because they moved out of virtual meetings, back into in-person meetings. And so, uh, to make a whole speech about the constitution pickings and standard laws in order to get this, because of his account request is a problem, the scope and the breadth of what we asked for was simply telling us what did we need in order to move into City Hall, and then kind of work on that basis. And that's not what we got. So, Mr. Brown, I would like to hear from you, if we could, and, you know, in seven or so minutes, tell us what you actually need to move us from this stage back into City Hall, and then hopefully we can work with the administration to have something palpable next week, so citizens can be comfortable in space where they can hear and back home where the city council belongs, in the city council chamber.
Okay, so basically, um, I believe the quickest way to get you back to City Hall is, is a motivational option. Like you said, the chairs, the chairs, desks, clean, uh, clean pods, clean up board, and, um, oh, and, of course, the microphones.
Just not.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
So, so, uh, pretty much that, but what I would, but also we'll talk about something, is the, uh, quality. Uh, I would, I would like even while we're there to, uh, get the fiber, which is free. Uh, and that is, uh, basically.
So, okay, so we have options. So, go, go, go ahead, um, go ahead, um, so, then, uh, the, uh, um, President and Council, uh, what we did, uh, we worked accordingly to the construction council subcommittee. So the options that we get put out, uh, we did go from a Cadillac to a Chevy, if you want to be fair and speaking. And so, uh, when you ask me questions, uh, first is the microphone. As you can see, the microphone that would be purchased can be portable, transportable, so housing, like in an outbound, that would be C, 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 and then, you know, here, it was over there. Now, with the desktop situation, if you look at the option, uh, the current microphone system over there won't work with a desktop, has to be, uh, the new system, this portable. And so, uh, along with, uh, Erica, which is scheduled for the eighteenth, we were trying to, uh, simplify, uh, three options for you, so we could collect and work together to come back in. So, so if you look at the options, one will be a complete renovation. The other option would be to leave the curved diocese, and the third option, uh, would be to get the desk. And so, when you look at the diocese, and we did have concerns about moving that curved diocese opposed to going into desk, so we did get estimates, we did get electricians out, uh, and we did get, uh, some estimates about flooring, whether or not, if we can redo the floor or add a floor, because that floor may have a vast extent, so all that has to be looked into. So I just wondered if, uh, government grabbed, uh, Phillips aside, said that we had worked diligently on what you did request, and that's why we have these three different options with different, uh, resolutions in. I think President will allow me to speak. Uh, my apologies, a term of service.
Yeah, okay, so, um, in looking at these options, first of all, it's really confusing because of the fact on your memorandum, you have option one, seventy thousand three sixty. On this other page, the option one is twenty-five thousand three sixty. The option one on this page includes the, um, cleaning of ducts, which we know we paid, we already, council already agreed to that, that's a separate cost to talk about, paid for. It says stripping clean floors, new chairs, and new partitions. Um, if I remember correctly, in the subcommittee, it was already given in terms of adding in, because, um, Mr. Brown indicated that the quality was an issue. And so, really, the, uh, fiber should have been, from my understanding, part of all. In addition to the fact that the mics, you indicated to the subcommittee that there were the two options of either renting the mics at five thousand, um, or purchasing, that's five thousand a month, or purchasing at twenty-five thousand, was also further indicated that because of the fact that you could transfer these mics, um, it probably was a good idea, as I think Councilwoman Trancey indicated, to purchase them. So again, that doesn't appear in these, in any, like, option one, it's not there. Um, again, on this memorandum with option two, you have option one, purchase, that's for councils to purchase playing microphone systems. Uh, again, which, which desks are you referring to? None of these have, like, actual costs in terms of, like, okay, these specific chairs, X amount of chairs, times whatever the cost is, they're just like round numbers, too, which kind of just gives me the fall. Um, but again, this is very confusing in terms of where you get these numbers from and what you're actually, um, really requesting, if you understand what I'm saying.
Yeah, I understand, um, but I can explain that, when, I believe.
But these have to be changed, at some point, because it's all over.
I understand, um, I, I, uh, I think the options that you have, and option one, this is more of a, uh, the options. On option two, we get, it say purchase, uh, microphone systems.
But what I'm saying is on these resolutions?
Right.
They're not comfortable, so they can't be.
Right.
And to what the President said, they're not inclusive of what we're totally discussed, like, again, the microphone should have been, like, included in all of, right, the fiber should have been included in all of this. But my question about the fiber is that, as the mayor indicated about some of these being analog, so like, resolution number eight, you have, um, having film tubes to complete the transition from analog to fiber. That cost is one forty, a hundred forty-nine thousand two eighty-three, but get resolution nine for having just the fiber is sixteen thousand five hundred and two eighty-seven.
Right.
So the question is, if the fact that you get the fiber, you don't need film tubes, that's the basic, so therefore that cost should be put in one of these options, correct? So therefore, that's what I'm saying, I don't think it.
Okay, so, so let me explain, let me explain in option one, option two, option three, uh, the way I was going to. So pretty much, option one, option two, option three is, is, is the length of, pretty much. It is, and, and, and pretty much, you know, the question was asked, how can we get back to the council chambers as soon as possible? So, basically, cleaning, cleaning the, uh, cleaning the, cleaning the area of the, of the council chambers, uh, public seating, and new partitions would be put in. And that is, and that is what I, which was seven thousand three hundred and sixty. Now, like I said, these are venues, which, which means it can be mixed, mixed in that. So, it, you know, everything is not, and the reason why I did not put, um, fiber, because fiber takes two weeks, it was two weeks to install. It takes two weeks to install, getting the engineer out, to install, it takes more than getting you just in there. And, yeah, getting you just in there. And a whole sound system in there, and then after that, we would have to not only install the mics, we would have to go back to make sure everything, the electric is good, all the wires is good, all the, everything, it will be completely done, pretty much. So that's the reason why I put that in option one. That, because I believe, I think as the President said, it's, the goal is to get back to council chambers as soon as possible.
But, yes, the point is, even if, even if that were to take me to be, you would explain to council, we can still move in, but this is still a part of option one, because of the fact that the sound quality has been an issue, period.
Right.
So every package I thought the subcommittee indicated that that should have been a part of each, each option because of the fact the sound quality is issued, so that wouldn't prevent them from moving in, though that could be delayed, you would explain it. And I think in terms of the diocese, the council president indicated he needed to know whether that wasn't an option. So that should have been explained, that maybe you can't remove the diocese because of what you're saying, he would have been.
Well, okay, I understand, and you're correct, but also going on that, this is the first time that I'm able to put everything to talk to you and explain why we can do, why we should do this versus this, and the things that we need to get back in. Now, now, I, I, now, if it was, if it was me, and this is, and I, first of all, fiber, no matter how long it took, if, if it was me. And, and the second, and the second thing, we can build, we can build the sound for, we can build the sound for them all. The sound in there, there's no humming, I've had, I've had it rewired months ago, where you don't, where you don't hear it humming in the council chambers. But fiber is the first thing, fiber is backbone of everything that. And that is about twenty thousand now. Second thing that I would do is replace everything in my office, because as you can see, eh, you know, which is, which is on option three, which is, which is a completely, complete cable system infrastructure. Because we need new encoders, the encoders are dying, constant problem with my vendor all the time, computers are dying, I have to restart them in the middle of meetings, I, it's pretty much, I'm putting things together, I couldn't, it's just horrible. I'm not, I'm not gonna lie about it. Um, also, that is, that is what I, but that's, that's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which I've been trying to get done since I've been here. And I usually have my guy come out, every six months, come out here and reevaluate our systems every time. Now, since COVID, it's gotten even worse. It's got even worse because we've added another component, like Facebook, YouTube, we had Facebook yesterday, but we are at the mercy of Facebook, YouTube, Zoom. I think we can do whatever, and, and a lot of these components with our social media do not match up. They do not match up, we have to buy different components, hush, hush, just like tonight. One of our new components went out as we were speaking, and I was over there, and I had to move it. It is better, it is better to get option one, and then work on option two and option three as we go along. That would be the quickest way to get you, to get you back there.
Hello, Theo.
How are you, how are you doing?
Councilman. I don't know if you don't think I have it. Theo?
Yes.
You and I both know this has been going on for the last three, four years since I've been on the house.
Yeah.
I am chair of the subcommittee for the state.
Yes, sir.
I have been begging for this project for the last three years. Maybe just I run that it comes on the election year. So my, my question, first I have a question. Now, the ducts been done, you, you're covering that money, but you're asking, has anyone been building the ducts?
It was sent, it was sent out, but the ducts were, uh, should be done the eighteenth, October eighteenth, okay.
Okay, now, I don't know.
Oh, and, and, uh, and just want to say.
I don't know about my colleagues.
Yes.
And it, and it is what it is. This is a little eightfold, this is a little stretch, you got less than two months. I think this project can come in on whoever is moving in. Just gonna put it out there, if, I think it's only clear, because I have to know what's eightfold, and I know it's a substantial amount of money, it should go on whoever get elected, I'm not saying who, I don't know, that's up to the people. If this project is sustainable, I, we've been, let's keep it real, we've been going through literally living hell for last year on Zoom. So we can zoom more out for two more months. Again, uh, if, if I'm not mistaken, I think we only allowed too many people, it's not changed anything, with, with the group, and what, fourteen, sixteen people or something? So.
I, I think it's a little, I think, uh, since, uh, from how it was stated in emergency, it's a little different now, I think, with, uh, Al Cooley, we were measuring out every three feet, I don't know how many, I don't know how many chairs in this, but within the quote, the quote was for a hundred, and we, uh, added a hundred and twenty chairs to be in the chamber and downstairs and the lobby.
I just say, no way in the world a hundred and twenty chairs going on that, and the council chamber doesn't number it. Social distance, no way, six feet apart, oh, no way, that's useful in council.
So, so, not to the later point, um, Councilwoman, uh, I think that, uh, uh, even though I have so many severe objections, I think this is at least a good start for, uh, us to have some clarity on what the council has been thinking, and for the administration here. I think we should schedule another, uh, cable subcommittee, uh, and start pushing some of this stuff out, I don't know.
some of this stuff out, I don't know, uh, why we would order a hundred and twenty chairs for something that I need to ask, and really want to be into for, uh, an hour or so, um, just me personally. Uh, so I would just ask, um, well, it's not on, we don't have to take an actual moment, but I would ask that the subcommittee, the paper subcommittee, uh, me and, uh, what do my colleagues?
Well, I know I'm on the cable subcommittee, and I have, for everyone, I love and respect you, but I think it's a waste of time. We, time is just progressing on, and we're gonna be end up in the civil stiff term of moments. Wouldn't we just bring the people back in the council chambers? That doesn't mean, what, what we got. I don't think we should pay any more money, I think we, they bull, it's bull, we're just gonna put it out there, it is, that's, that's not what we mentioned, that's not what, what you brought to the table, it's none of us, it's just me, clean up the ducts, put some chairs everywhere, turn the mic on, let's go forward, that's what I.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Yes, I'm good.
Councilwoman.
I'm looking at these pictures of these banquet chairs in this pack, and I can see the way these are, are on those chairs, letting them know, the chairs that they have in these pictures are those chairs. So just want to know, everybody wants you to be comfortable at the city hall, but I guess evidently they don't want you too comfortable where you're gonna wanna stay.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman.
Yeah, I just wanted to point something out. Um, the duck cleaning, when they're going to do the duck cleaning, they're also going to be examining the ducks where your repairs that need are needed. And here's the problem, when he runs the fiber, maybe he has to remove some duck fur, and I think that's why he was trying to be able to coincide together with P C S units, so we don't have to bid out all over again, and maybe they can just take care of that for a nominal, uh, fee, that, that was just one thinking, but I do understand the concerns of the rest of you, yeah, I just wanted to point that out.
Mr. President. Yes, uh, I just wanted to be, uh, a point of clarity, with all respect, uh, the business still has to go on, no matter whatever election is offered, and, uh, this is one of the initiatives that the House designed, because it was taking so long, so that's why we're here. And to say that, uh, it's a waste of time, we put a lot of work in this, to try to find resolve for the council. And so the options are not set in stone, we didn't order anything, we're trying to implement, so we work together, collab, collaboratively, to make sure that we all are satisfied. Field put a lot of hours in this, as well as I did, and other people in the mayor's administration. And so to say that we just want to wait till the next administration come in, we can put the business aside, uh, as taxpayers, and I know far as my phone and my cell phone, uh, people are complaining about company meter, and they wanna get back to the stiff ball. As far as a hundred and twenty chairs, uh, if you look at the capacity, it's a capacity of a hundred and forty, and so we just did a declamation, uh, of chairs. Now, let me just be clear, uh, the mayor was against the chairs, we had a chair, but he looked at the chair because council says they want a fiber. So we did all the direction that you guys asked us to do. Now, you may not like the presentation of how we did it together, we'll back to do it again, but the numbers, uh, just won't change, regardless of where we get the chairs or what happened. These things are needed, Council President, the mic system, uh, as well as social distance.
Thank you, uh, thank you. Uh, Mr. President, one of, one of the things I think we probably need on this project that I would prefer to spend money on, um, because none of us, uh, have expertise in both cable and design, um, is to maybe look at getting a project manager to the benchline, because I've been here twelve years, and we had a great inauguration when I was the first for council. And I know, uh, and I, I believe, we haven't had auditors, my, I, I fringe every time when administration asks me for another dollar, so I understand that part. But I also understand that if we're gonna turn the page from what we had, and this is a low, being in a funeral home, in order to have our council meetings, this is a low, um, performing, so sing your song. Um, but, uh, but, uh, I think that the next people deserve to come into a council chambers that is there, and so I'm willing, uh, even though I'm not happy with what this is, to look at, uh, a project manager that is unbiased, because the problem with that, whatever we communicated as a council to the administration, didn't come back in a way that was palatable to the council. And what I would like to see, which probably shouldn't be done two years ago, if you did have a line of chairs, so a line of chairs shouldn't have been ordered when you passed that resolution, but excuse us, P S A's in the council chambers, without them to be doing everything else, without the rule for the council, so they come to the microphone and say, we're working together, and we need to do the thing, you're constantly violating, uh, what the council voted for, do, he didn't veto it. So once something is not vetoed by the administration, that means that you guys are agreeing to administer laws and rules of the city. That hasn't happened, so now we're scrambling to get things done, and so I wanna take the politics out of the oven. If we can find a, a, a program manager to work, a project manager, that's one, no, no, not, not what I'm saying. What I'm, what I'm saying to you, um, Mr. Holly, and our audience is there, we just need somebody to come in, because we sit down and interview three or four project people that were supposed to do this, and that project didn't happen to come through, this H G B and other people, we haven't been there as a council. We interviewed the other people, and then these people just came as the people that you guys have picked in order to do this, council chambers, council hall. And so, uh, whatever y'all do on the upper three floors of City Hall is up to you, but when it comes to home, you said there was a council, Council Hall, and you didn't want anybody in your seat, I didn't want anybody in my seat, we had a reason, and there's an honor that comes with being a council person of this illustrious city. Right now, I'm sitting in a chair, in a separate place, and I don't wish this on any future council. And so what I'm asking is to select an impartial, uh, project manager, give them a small scope of work, which is making sure the sound is right, and the bare minimums to move it into the city is there, and then we can vote on their recommendation up and down as a council. On one option, to move back into City Hall, and to be able to air the inauguration swearing in of that next council in City Hall in the council chambers. That would be my recommendation, as not only to my colleagues, but to this administration to get it done, because humanity, based on how it's worked and how it's been working, has not happened. And all I'm saying is, uh, on January first, is by charter, swearing in by the council. I won't be there, but I would love for the person that sits in my seat to be comfortable and have, uh, chairs that are adequate, and for their audience to sit there, and sit in chairs that are not only adequate, but also COVID-friendly. It would help me to miss, so, uh, that's all I was gonna say on that.
May I say one more thing, please? Now, I, and I heard you being project manager, but also, you know, my job as cable director is, is more technical than anything. Now, I, I talked, burned myself, and, uh, we've talked to H G B, which is a design, which was, which were going to help us, and they gave us, they gave us what a scope of work, and what they needed from the, um, what they needed input from the councils. And, and they took their time to go ahead and go through, but they need, they don't need my input as a director, they need your input.
Mr. President. You know what, uh, the Facebook is, uh, so, yeah, yeah, really, really sorry about all, all this confusion and circularity. The, the, the results that should have happened, again, it's been almost a year. The city should be penalized for violating the, the public, uh, uh, open media. It doesn't matter about Facebook, Facebook is a joke, and so is YouTube. We, these people, our residents are paying Comcast fees, and they also paying, uh, A G and P fees. Those pay fees guarantee that they have the rights to get brought. People, uh, YouTube is circular, it should never happen. Right now, it should go directly to the A G, and every, and every option we had that the citizen cannot watch, this, uh, uh, they're, they're paying, that they're paying people millions of dollars a year, they pay, and they can't watch it. The city needs to get sued for that, and it's not a problem with the council, you've been trying to get, get it done for a long time, but this is, this is blatantly in the reverse place, that they do not, that they are, we are not benefiting their work. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, um, I don't know.
Before we leave this topic, uh, and I've been listening, uh, and with the, uh, uh, I know that the people, the directors, the brand, as well, that we're working with them to, uh, go to cable competition, and they thought they came back as what we meant to want, uh, resolutions here. And so I'm not, uh, I'm not sure what you want to do, this is a lot of talk, I'm now about what, what this is all about.
Let me say.
But, but let me just say this, let me say this. What the envelope is, is to get a system that people can put audio via hot call, all right? And whoever that is, whether it's City Hall, or whether it is, um, another facility that the, the administration's responsible for, I'd facilitate. So I would do my job to provide a facility for council to have their meetings, uh, that is COVID safety, all right? But people have been complaining for weeks, announced that they cannot hear, they cannot see, the system goes down week after week after week. So we need to get, uh, something that is not, uh, uh, meander on some age, for people to service, to hear, and need to hear. So people do this, it might as well, but, you know, if it's already in the budget, we add, you know, uh, four hundred thousand dollars in cable budget, all this stuff could have been done, council. So we need to really get, follow these parts. And, uh, we go, uh, I think I understand from the things you want, the vinyl chairs are already podium, people have been using that council chambers, okay?
Illegally.
Because it belongs to.
Illegally.
It belongs to the people.
Illegally.
And the people have, not legally.
Illegally.
Council chambers, as well as all state property, belongs to citizens of the public.
Illegally.
When we reach the citizens of the public, I'm not, I'm not.
The council chambers is.
It belongs to the taxpayers.
Thank you, I don't know. Council chambers.
It belongs to taxpayers.
Yes, it does, and so does my involved. So I'll mark a journey this evening as.
Oh, my.
Get over. I gotta go, I gotta go over there.
All right, you have to move. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We can't have a council. It is, that's, you know, it's wrong. Okay. So, okay. Stay down there. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I don't remember, I'm just kidding, this is, I'm all in general. I just worked.
So.
Since we're in California, right, since we're, 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 we're in the, 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 the,